Good evening, everybody. It's the February 7th special town meeting for the introductions of the budget. Carl?
Okay, so this evening is presentation of the budget. You have binders in front of you which give you the document that will be going over starting tonight, and then there's a number of meetings where on the town side we'll go over expenses line item by line item to give you an idea of what's in the budget, where things that are noteworthy and the like. Then you have a dedicated evening with the superintendent just to go over the Board of Ed budget, and then you've got another evening by yourselves to figure out any other adjustments you want to make to the budget before you pass something off to the public hearing. Sending it off to the public hearing is not the be all and end all. You do have a meeting that takes place after the public hearing for making further adjustments to the budget based on public feedback that you get, and then coming out of that meeting, that's the night the numbers are set rolling into the referendum. So, technology doesn't fail us. So tonight is, I will go over the town expenses as well as giving you a general overview, general overview of revenue and where all expenses are, and all expenses would include Board of Education-related expenses. So to start, as I've said in the past, the budget process is perhaps the most important policy document the council will touch during a given year. It is one where you're setting priorities because you are allocating scarce resources. Those scarce resources are dollars that come in from taxpayers and from the state of Connecticut and others. Scarce resources implies that there is a degree of competition over these, where dollars go, and competition means you have the choice for what gets funded, what gets done, what doesn't get done, and the like through the budget. The proposed budget offers one set of priorities for council consideration, so on the town side of the budget, this reflects where I wanted to go for crafting it. The education part of the budget will reflect where the superintendent and Board of Education wanted to go. Those two budgets are now fused to the town council making a decision for what your priorities are. It contains the best information available as of this date. There are a couple of assumptions that are still in a state of flux, and as historically has taken place, once those numbers get landed, that gets communicated to the council, and if that presents an opportunity for a cut, the numbers are typically been calculated for you so that you can make reductions to the budget based on changing assumptions. The budget is more than numbers. You're setting priorities to balance needs. You're responding to external pressures which push on Clinton, which is general macroeconomic issues or decisions that are made in Hartford that impact local government, and then you're making, responding to internal pressures over local priorities. You also need to have a budget that you prepare for and are aware of the future. The idea should not be looking at this as a one-time, we're only going to look at it this year, and we don't care about next year or looking into the future. So based on budget highlights, the total expenditures for the whole budget is proposed to increase by 4.37%. The proposed tax rate to support the budget is an increase of 5.10% as is presented in the budget before you. The big difference is between the budget increase and the tax rate is the grand list shrunk as of October 1, 2023, so instead of growth, which is what you've had over the past few years, you had a contraction. Also, the appropriation of undesignated fund balance for capital is less than what it was last year as a revenue from where we were at last year. The budget as proposed on the town side, budget is going from 18.2 to 18.8 million, which is a $600,000 increase or 3.6%. Board of Education is going up from 35 million to 37 million and a 5.24% increase. Debt, you can see that the town is up or down, and the Board of Ed is up. This is a reverse of what happened last year. It's just the amortization schedule. Different from prior years is the net of all debt is not going down. It is in fact increasing a little bit going into the proposed budget year. And then capital, again, continues a trend of being significant with the total capital proposed to increase. One note on capital is on the town side, before any projects were considered for departments, this budget has to reconcile the desire to do the sidewalk from John Street to North High, so automatically the capital plan was started at $1.4 million just for that sidewalk project. So you get to the bottom line of a $62 million budget going up to 64, $2.7 million increase or the 4.37. Understanding of process and what's been done thus far gives you an idea of budget adjustments that have been made. So department requests to me were a little over 18, almost 18.9 million. I cut that by 25,000 going into this on the operating side, getting down to the 18.857. Debt is a little over five. You don't make adjustments to debt. It is what it is. It's like a mortgage payment. You pay it. So I made no adjustments, so debt is at that $5 million marker. Total capital was well over $6 million. There's a lot in there that did not get funded, so I've already cut that by 2.8 million, getting you down to the 3.8 that's in front of you in the budget book you have. And then Board of Ed operations, there is no town manager adjustment to that. That goes directly from the Board of Ed to the council in this budget document. The slices of the pie, regardless of the dollar amounts, the total pie doesn't really change between one year and the next. Everything is oddly static. The allocation of total changes, the Board of Ed's operating increase at 1.8 is the largest, followed by the town at 600,000. Debt for the Board of Ed is up by 270,000. Capital for the town is up by 256,000, and then Board of Ed capital and debt for the town are proposed to contract from the year prior. For the benefit of our news reporter, did the math for you. So there's the questions. That's the percentages that for the total Board of Ed and the total education budget, which is forms the basis of the referendum question. So the total town increase goes is, goes from 23.3 million to 24 million or 663,000 for a 2.84% increase over the year prior. Education is 3.8, or 38.7 million going to 40.8, roughly $2 million increase or 5.29, and while it's not voted on, the total bottom line again is that 4.37 increase. On the revenue side, the proposed budget has that increased reliance on property tax given the reduction in the use of applied fund balance. State aid is roughly the same amount of the town's budget as it was the year prior. We're rolling into the second year of the state's biennium. There should be no confusion over what we're going to get for state aid going into this budget as there was last year. The governor will present something tomorrow. There's buzz up in Hartford about some potential changes, but I'm not sure whether that's going to see the light of day at this point for our budgeting purposes. Permits and fees, that's the internally generated revenue from the town. That's grown as piece of the pie. The driver on that is increased investment income as interest rates have improved. We've tried to capture some of that by getting additional revenue coming in on the, on investment So the grand list, the grand list shrank by almost two tenths of a percent compared to the year prior. The discussion we're having tonight starts before the Board of Assessment Appeals has had its hearings going into any further adjustments to be made. So when I put this budget together, I did assume a certain discount to the grand list going into giving you a mill rate calculation, and again, after the Board of Assessment Appeals is completed, traditionally we've adjusted where the grand list shakes out for further adjusting to what the mill rate would shake out to be. That would be in March, so that kind of conversation would take place in, in and around that meeting that takes place after the public hearing. Just to give you more flavor on the grand list, and we really haven't focused on that in the past because it's always been good news, it's growing and wonderful. The grand list is made up of three components. Real estate, which is the largest piece of that. Motor vehicle, which is a, the next largest, largest piece of what the total grand list is comprised of. And personal property, that's a business-only related valuation on property. So when you look at the individual pieces of that, real estate shrunk a little bit. Motor vehicle shrunk a lot more. Personal property grew, but because personal property is such a small slice of the pie, those reductions seen in real estate and motor vehicles pulls, pulls things down more. The approved tax abatements that are in process over at Indian River further reduce the impact of the grand list because you're losing some of that valuation is now tax exempt. Looking at the history of the grand list, you can see that historically it had been flat. In 2020, it went up with the revale, but then has slowly been moving downward. That's in some instances more of a traditional cycle than what you've seen historically. So when you do revale, which would be taking place going into next year, you would expect to see in the 20, the October 1, '24 grand list would start to spike back up again to realize the sales that have taken place since 2020 during the sort of outmigration due to COVID. So that's sort of that normal whipsaw is what you see traditionally happen with a grand list as opposed to the, the flat line you had traditionally. State aid is typically used to limit property tax increases. It's the second largest source of revenue to the town, regardless of whatever little pots it comes in. All of that money from the state is a significant factor in our revenue mix, and the town is very sensitive to any reductions in state aid. We are in that second year of the biennium, so we should not expect any changes in aid amounts. The dollars that are in the budget reflect what had been approved by the General Assembly last year. Locally generated revenue is projected to increase. A lot of this is seen due to investment income. So there's been a growth of almost 10% on the local revenue side, which equals 0.13 mils of taxes. Fund balance, this is, over the past few years, this has dominated the budget conversation. So by way of reminder, it traditionally is used two ways. First, it provides a degree of tax relief. So you have in the past used appropriated fund balance in order to have a general fund revenue that pulls down the mill rate. It's been at 250,000 in a normal year during a revale year. We took it up to 350,000 in order to smooth out the impacts of revale. I'm bringing it up a year early just to smooth out the impacts of the reduction in the grand list to take some of the pressure off of the taxpayer to keep the budget moving forward. The other side of it is the use of it as a revenue source to finance capital improvements. I've tried to keep it used just for long-lived significant capital items, not transitory things that are, well, capital expenses have a very short shelf life. The budget you have proposed is 2.8 million to be used for fund balance in order to accommodate that. And as you all know, the cardinal rule for fund balance is you use one-time revenue for one-time expenses. You do not use it as a significant revenue source for the town. Government expenditures, so this would reflect just the town side of the budget. Again, proposed to be funded at 18.8 million, increase is 655,000 or 3.6%. Some of the items that are pushing the budget up, increase in the tip fee that we pay to the new MIRA dissolutionment authority, so the garbage that goes to the transfer station, we're paying to have that disposed of. The MIRA dissolution authority is telegraphing a large jump in where the tip fee could go going into next year. They used to have a pot of money for a tip fee stabilization fund, and there's a question as to whether that fund under new legislation is able to be used to keep a curb on tip fees. So there is a lot to watch on MIRA and garbage. State mandate uncertainty, so when we get into this, you will see that the registrar voter's budget has ballooned significantly. That's directly attributable to early voting. Yes, the state provided some money this fiscal year, which is supposed to help defray some of those costs. It is not going to be sufficient in order to cover it going into a new fiscal year. So that's something where local government is going to have to absorb that expense. There's also a mandated payment to go in for a firefighter cancer fund. That's a requirement of every municipality, whether you have a paid department or a volunteer department, so that piece is now baked into the budget as a must-pay. Inflation continues to be an issue just generally. We're seeing increases on lines of insurance, property casualty and, and healthcare. There's a growing demand for programs, and you've seen that under the senior program where the public wants more and more because they didn't really get anything up until this point. And then we have pending union negotiations. So going into this budget, there needs to be an acknowledgement that there's negotiations to begin with the Supervisors Union, the Clerical Union, and the Public Works Union. Looking at putting parts of the budget into cost centers, general government administration is most of your frontline departments. This is where some of that registrar voter expense would be picked up, showing increased lift under that category. Land use and development is essentially flat. Fire and police are up about 3%. Public Works is up a little bit more than 3%. Again, this is where you would be seeing some of that MIRA increase pushing through, driving up that cost center. Recreation and human services, well, the recreation department is not going up within this cost center is also the senior program, and that would be driving some of that upward motion. Library, that's the request that comes to me from the library board, so they're up almost 5.5%. And then insurance benefits, that general catch-all category is up a little over 2%. And there's some uncertainty in there on what, what direction the healthcare program is going to take. We're constantly monitoring to see where the state comptroller's office is going to come out with giving updated projections on what the healthcare renewal will be. That's a piece of information to know for not only the town side, but the Board of Ed side. We're both using the same insurance product, so if it comes in lower than the assumption that's already been built into the budget, those are opportunities for the town to reduce both the town side of the budget and the Board of Ed side of the budget. Capital, so you can see the total amount for capital has grown going into the proposed year. Again, 1.4 million is baked into that for the sidewalk project, but for that sidewalk project, we would have been lower than the 3.8. That's proposed in front of you. In the green bar, I've given you the amount of fund balance that has been used each year in order to buy down some of that expense of capital projects. There is no green bar for the outline years of FY '16 and '17 through FY 1920 because it wasn't a practice to run it through the budget. It was a practice to do things at other special meetings where the public didn't necessarily have a chance to vote on it. We have always run it through the budget since I put together the budget. That is the process you should be following. That is the process you should continue to follow for transparency sake, to have the public see how you're spending these dollars. So there's an ongoing need for critical investments. A number of projects reflect those core needs. You've got the council-approved sidewalk project in there. There's the continuing fire apparatus replacement reserve to be funded as well as funding for paving. Again, for the benefits of those of you that are new, we used to issue bonds for paving, and then we would retire the debt. So you get about 20 years out of a life of road. You get 20 years out of a bond, so after you've paid off the bond, you've got to go back and do the road again. And you're paying investment return on all of that, so it's a poor use of town money. Should be budgeted for, and this budget continues that practice. We have state mandated activities that have to be funded. This includes the second installment on revaluation and the second installment on the plan of conservation and development. This budget marks the last year of funding for both of those activities, so they will have the cash needed to get both of those moving when the, the new fiscal year starts. There's also some facility needs from the Board of Education, which have been proposed to be funded in this capital plan. This gives you more of a granular idea of how projects are proposed to be funded. Everything that's in green shows you where fund balance would be used. Everything in blue shows you stuff that's proposed to be paid for out of tax dollars. So there's a little bit of a mix in there of what, what gets funded at what level utilizing fund balance, but you can see fund balance touches pretty much everything in terms of the buckets of, of asks that have come in. Debt service, as I noted before, debt service has a slight increase going into this fiscal year. There's an increase of $23,000. The driver here is the lease purchase agreement for the fire department replacement boat. Had that not been funded by a lease purchase and it was funded out of fund balance, then you would have seen debt service continue to curve downward as has been the trend for the past few years. And generally, we will continue to go down, but you, you've got a new lease purchase baked into total debt. The proposed mill rate, so the proposed budget in front of you would require a mill rate going to 31.35 mils. You may recall, if you've been here long enough, the mill rate, when we started this process in 2020, 21, the mill rate was 31.25. So we're getting up to where we were roughly four years ago with this budget. So it's an increase of 1.5 mils or 5.1% over the year prior. Sort of that history of where we've been, it's been held at zero for a really long time, and you're going to have to make a decision as to how you're going to balance the budget and address the need for taxation at some point in time, so this budget at least starts that conversation. How that millage gets distributed, so out of the 31.35 mils, roughly 18 mils go towards education. General government is one mil. Land use is three tenths of a mil. Police and fire are 2.1 mils. Public Works 1.7. The library, four tenths of a mil. Recreation, almost four tenths of a mil. Capital and debt is at 4.2 mils, and non-departmental, which is insurance and the like, is over three mils. Impact on the taxpayer, so in this exhibit, because the grand list had the reduction in automobile values, instead of just focusing on real estate, which is what I've done in the past, I gave you the auto component so that you could see the total tax levy that this average taxpayer could have. So at the 29.83 mils, the real estate tax bill would go from 6,500 to 6,800. Their auto tax bill, even with the higher mill rate because the value has dropped, shrinks by $16.15. So their total tax bill would go up by $315, which is not the 5.1, but really it's, once you blend it all together, that's 4.6%. So the 315 is about $26 a month extra to provide for this budget. The value of a mil is $1.7 million, so this is for your future budget reference, especially those of you that are new. This starts to articulate for you the goalpost of if you're going to make changes to the budget, the dollar amount you need to have in your head. To impact the mill rate, the mill rate functions at the 1/100 of a mil. So 1/100 of a mil requires you to find $17,259 worth of cuts. If you're not cutting in increments of that amount, if you're less than that, you're not doing anything to benefit the taxpayer. You're simply cutting for the sake of cutting. So you really need to be mindful of that as a dollar amount, if you're looking at ways to swing either on the revenue side or the expenditure side in order to adjust the budget. For the average taxpayer, that 1/100 of a mil only delivers $2.18 in tax relief. So you will do a lot of work trying to find a way to cut it, and it doesn't really move the needle that much. So you would be looking at larger increments than $17,000 if your goal is to provide substantive tax reduction. How the average tax bill is spent, so again, the majority of the expense goes towards paying for education, so this average taxpayer's $6,800 tax bill, $3,900 of that goes towards education. Police and fire is $463 a year. It's probably cheaper than home security service. Public Works at 372 is probably cheaper than getting your driveway plowed. Parking rack can at $82 a year. Library at 93. Capital and debt is at 935, and while not all of that benefits a taxpayer directly, these are agreements that have been made, especially on the debt side when the voters have agreed, agreed to approve projects. I did put together a budget scenario. I am not ignorant of the fact that the council's predilection of late has been to use undesigned fund balances as a way to lower the mill rate. It's been the only talking point for a number of budgets. So I gave you a budget scenario which uses more fund balance. So my assumption has been that you want to reduce the mill rate, and you will do that through using undesigned it. My assumption is that it will only use, be used for capital expenses. Again, one-time revenue for one-time expenses. So that requires you to add another $983,137 in undesigned fund balance. That's enough to have the entire capital plan funded by undesigned fund balance with no tax dollar contribution of it. The biggest scenario, assumption I'm making is that the council will not be using undesigned for operating, thereby creating a structural deficit going into the '25, '26 fiscal year. So the extent of the use of fund balance would be the 983. That lowers the mill rate to 30.77 mils. Again, giving that same math with the motor vehicle and the real estate, just on the real estate side, the tax bill goes up by 3.15%. The auto tax bill is down by a little over seven, so that total tax exposure for, for this individual who's the average person in Clinton is 2.7% increase. And that $183 annual increase is roughly $15 a month of additional, additional cost. So on a closing note, good budgets give the council an opportunity to set priorities and direction for the town, so this is now going to be your task in setting the budget. Difficult decisions went into putting the budget together to try and budget and balance what our realities are with where we sit today, which is a slightly different budget environment than where we've sat in the past, and difficult decisions lay ahead for you as you go through your budget deliberations to put together a fair budget, meet the needs of the public, and a tax rate that works. And with that, that is the end of my last and fifth budget presentation to you. Somebody else can do this next year.
Thank you, Carl.
That's now up for Mary Ann to go over the Board of Education's budget.
Hey, Carl. The, with the, with the revale being next year and the history going back to the grand list of 2020 was a huge spike and then it sort of decreased down, and we, we spent some past budget discussions talking about sort of blending that out a little bit. You know, is that something we will talk about in future discussions as, you know, thinking about that revale for next year? As, you know, thinking about that revale for next year? You know, and maybe, you know, understanding that if we increase the mill rate this year and the revale happens and valves go up, then, you know, it could be a big spike next year. How much, you know, I don't know if we need to answer it now, but I think we need to talk about that in future sessions to sort of think about blending that out a little bit. Do you agree, or do you think that's something that you don't?
I have cautioned this council for every budget that I put together and every conversation around spending undesigned fund balance. I have urged you to be, have caution. You're going to have future projects looking at you in the face. You have the risk of bonding on the horizon. And if fund balance is blown and not available for you, you're going to miss an opportunity to self-fund projects that you will now have to turn to the taxpayers to approve and give you bond authorization, which will then build debt service for you, which becomes a fixed component of your budget. So the fund balance was meant to give you flexibility rather than tying up more and more of the budget with fixed payments like lease purchases, like ongoing debt service. Revale going into next year, as I have said before, you're going to be looking at the estate change to motor vehicles. So motor vehicle values will drop again next year. Whatever you get with grand list growth on the real estate side is going to be blunted a little bit with what happens on the motor vehicle side. That's a function of state law. So you're going to want normally in a revale year to have fund balance available to provide a cushion for the taxpayer to not have to absorb the full brunt of what the outcome is of revale. If you don't have fund balance available because it's spent aggressively, then you're going to have not a lot of flexibility when you do the budget this time next year. Aside from debt service avoidance and then wherever the tax bill goes, the other issue, and this has been pointed out repeatedly, the biggest funding that we get from the state of Connecticut is the education cost sharing grant. By state statute, that is supposed to be reduced in Clinton. It's supposed to be reduced every year by $217,000. The governor has not done that based on COVID money and not wanting to negatively impact towns. His proposal last year, when he launched his budget, was to start that cycle of reductions again. And the General Assembly overrode that. That is not something that can be sustained indefinitely. The state doesn't have the financial resources or flexibility to carry the obligation of holding towns like Clinton harmless, who are supposed to be reduced, and then at the same time, give money to priority districts who are supposed to be getting more. So there's some short-term stuff happening, but ultimately, and it would start next year, would be the risk for it, is a major source of revenue to the town would start to collapse. So again, not having flexibility built in because fund balance isn't there in a strong fashion is going to put ever greater pressure on you when you do this budget next year. And you have to figure out how to get yourself out of this rut you're in of spending it. You're not going to have it forever, and that's been stated repeatedly. I know it's not always embraced or not always accepted, but it's a statement of fact. And whether it's this year, next year, two years from now, whatever, you're not going to have it forever. And if it's not there, you can see the sensitivity the budget has now gotten to it. I dialed it back, and all of a sudden, we've got, we're looking at a larger tax increase. So we are very sensitive now to the use of fund balance in the town's budget, particularly when I'm not having something like grand list growth in order to beef up our revenue side otherwise.
On that note, thanks. Yeah. Oh, I thought they were already tucked in there. Okay. Where are they? Okay. There you go.
And I didn't spend money on color copy.
Hey, good. How are you?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. That's a tough act to follow. But I will try by laying out tonight a little bit of our work, as Carl did, talking about the idea of the budget. There's always context. There's a story and a through line of what those priorities are, what the community expectations are, and then how we make that work in a fiscally responsible way. So I am going to walk you through that. I'm going to start on the presentation and the slides, and then I'll walk you through the book so you know all of the information that's there. And then I'll be back on February 22nd, after you've had some time to do your work with the town budget, take a look at the Board of Ed budget, and we'll dig a little deeper, answer questions, and talk about where we are. So thank you for letting me be here tonight. I'm superintendent of Clinton Public Schools, proud to represent the Board of Ed budget tonight. We are, as we enter into this and as we always do, we're following a roadmap which represents our strategic plan. So the board has outlined a three-year strategic plan. We're currently in year two, going into year three. And that strategic plan is based on our mission, which is to empower learners to embrace and influence the future with courage and compassion. And there are four major strategic plan objectives that lay out all of the goals and action steps of our work and the priorities for our budget. What this all gathers to is what our core purpose is. And that is to prepare our students as graduates. And it takes all of those things to help make sure that our students in their journey through our pre-K through 12 education have the opportunities, the experiences, quality curriculum, to be able to forge their path into the future. So what does it look like? You might, this might be a familiar face. Many of you sat in the front row at our graduation last year and saw Abel Rodriguez, our salutatorian, give his speech and talk about his journey as a multilingual language learner, coming to the Clinton Public Schools, coming to this community, and what the community, his family, and the schools offered to him as he made his way, what inspired him, what engaged him and made him realize the possibilities. And he is now matriculated at Harvard, continuing that journey of education. He's one example, but I think his words last year really inspired what we can be and what our community does for the students here. So these are, always got to go with a few pictures, right? To help represent so that it's not all words. But these are some of the important programs, experiences, and ways that our students interact beyond the classroom and as extensions of the classroom. I will highlight right in the center is our new advanced manufacturing machinery, purchased through grant funding, but as part of a partnership here with our local manufacturers, our EDC, and provides opportunities for our students not only to learn industry standard, but then to engage with our local manufacturers in internships. Each of those pictures represents various programs that give our students that opportunity to expand who they are and empower them not just as learners, but as community members and people. So what does it take? Picture there is our teacher of the year, Whitney Madura, third grade teacher at Joel Elementary School. And this is that collage of all of the different types of staff who make a difference for our students every single day. It takes their commitment, it takes their caring and investment, and the expertise that they bring that matters and results in the outcomes that we see that are really positive for our students and what we want here in Clinton. So as the board and the administration stepped into this work, how do we do that? How do we make that happen for our students? These are some of the priorities that we focus on as we make decisions about our spending and what we set our sights on. That takes us into our process of budget development. And as you are embarking on that, as Carl presented, all of your cost center budgets in your binder and all of the information about some of the drivers, right? Our budget development begins with that and began in the fall, December, with our Budget and Finance Subcommittee. And then the month of January is when we hold all of our workshops so that we can prepare a budget to present to you so that you can consider it going forward in your work. So I want to start, and I want to emphasize that this is not my budget. I present a budget to the Board of Education, and then they take that budget and work with it, challenge, review, ask questions, delve a little deeper, we make adjustments. And this group represents people that are not only invested in education and our schools, but many of them have served this community in a variety of different ways. Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Building Committee, Town Charter. So these are people that are not just education-based, but they're Clinton-based, and they care about this community. And I say that because the work that they've put in to vet and review this and to bring this budget and really outline the needs, because this is a different budget than you've seen from us in a very long time. And they understand that, and they know that, and I'm here to represent it tonight. But their work is what you're beginning to embark on, and we know our work isn't over as we partner with you in that. So what did our board look at? Really looking at the trajectory and continuing that positive movement as we come out of COVID and as we move forward with our strategic plan. Looking at the continuing building of our staff expertise and quality curriculum programs in the core areas of math and in literacy, and those are embedded in this budget. The other pieces are really taking a look at the increasing needs of students in our schools. In our community, we have a great increase in our multilingual families and learners. We are seeing an increase throughout the state, as well as in Clinton, in students in need of special education services, as well as students who have gaps in their learning from the past several years and are in need of some intervention in order to help them achieve at grade level. The other major area that I can tell you my board works very carefully on is cost containment. So this doesn't just happen when we get into budget season. We look at this all year long. We manage our budget well, and we really, truly try to evaluate all the trends and expenditures and make the, provide to you the best possible budget we can at this point in the year. So going back through all of our contracts, looking for reductions in cost, renegotiating contracts, going out to bid as necessary, working with vendors, and looking for grant funding opportunities to try to contain our costs and still provide our students with what they need. And they really vet those requests based on the critical needs of our students and the instructional and extension experience of students. So trying to minimize all of those outside things that support what we do with kids, but really focus our priorities and decisions on the student and staff in our classrooms. So this budget that we are presenting tonight was unanimously adopted by the Board of Education just last night. It's an increase of over $1.8 million or a 5.24% increase. And what I'd like to do in the next several slides is break through where some of those pressure points are, some of our key increases, and really give you perspective about that percent increase. We have, I have never presented an increase at this level. Our board has never brought an increase at this level in the operating account. And this is a year where I hope you'll see as we go through this and as we have a chance to talk with you about why these decisions were made and why we sit here tonight asking for this funding for our students and our staff and our schools. So some of the pressures that we're facing, and this is not unique to Clinton. If you check out some headlines, you'll see in many of the communities in our state that there are increases in student needs, and I alluded to that earlier. We have numbers that represent and can share with you the increase in special education referrals, which means recommendations from teachers or parents that demonstrate that there may be a need for a student to have specialized instruction to assist them in their learning. And there's a legislative process, there's a formal process by which all of that work happens. But we are definitely seeing an increase in those referrals and evaluations as well as the need for services for students. There's an increase, I mentioned, in our multilingual student enrollment, which also requires some services for those students as they come into our classrooms and begin to learn English or advance their English as they work within our classrooms in our schools. We're seeing more students, I mentioned, with some gaps in their learning and needing some intervention in both literacy and math. Our mental health needs and counseling access for students and their ability to access the mental health professionals that work for us, as well as a community-based organization that we have in our schools, has definitely increased in the number of support that students are seeking out, that support as they try to navigate their world and their school and their learning. And then lastly, one of the priorities in this budget is really, we always look at staffing. It's the largest component of our budget, and you'll see that when we break down the objects. But over the years, over the last years, we've been facing declining enrollment, and the board has made various decisions around reducing teachers and bringing, maintaining class sizes, but reducing staff, not just teachers. To adjust our buildings, we closed Pearson. We realigned our district so that we could be smart and fiscally responsible and efficient with the funding we have in providing the services that we need. So those enrollment trends are always provided. I'll show you where they are in our book. But one thing of note, and I've been talking about this, is that this enrollment decline had moved through Joel. It's now moved through Elliott, and it's now partway through Morgan. So this idea of extreme enrollment decline is not projected to continue for very long. And in fact, this year, we exceeded our projections by 41 students. So our projections that we use a company to do have been very well-aligned to what we've realized. This year, we saw this big differential. So we had 41 more students enrolled, mainly at the middle school and high school, than was projected. And the new projections kind of take that into account and realign that, but we're really not sure what we're going to see. People continue to enroll in our schools. So since this plus 41, which is taken in October, we have continued to see new enrollments in our schools. So Clinton is a hot commodity. People are coming to this community, and we need to be able to provide the services and the staffing and the experiences that our students need. The other side of our pressures are those costs that go into running the district and supporting all of the components of our district. So clearly, we have increases in our certified and non-certified salary costs, health insurance that Carl mentioned, just overall inflation and cost to goods and services. But the last two, as the town council is aware, we have seen a tremendous increase this year that caused me and the Board of Ed Chair, Erica Galvin, to come down and talk about accessing the non-lapsing fund because of increasing out-of-district costs. So this year, we have five more students than were projected. And next year, we'll have a net of six more students. So this budget and a big part of this increase is making up for that fixed amount that is this year and then just a small increase. Taking those two together, this budget has to represent the needs and the costs related to those services, and those are within our special education area and are required through the parent placement team process and student individualized education plans, which say that the programs we have in district that we've developed may not meet this small group of students, and they need to be educated with services outside of the district. So the next few slides take you through the object analysis. And I'll walk you through those, and then I'll show you again where that's represented in our budget book. So we'll start with the increases, and there are a number of objects that are increasing. The one that usually is our largest increase is the certified salaries. The increase of just over $667,000 is based on our negotiated contractual increases. We will be renegotiating with our teachers and our administrators this summer. So next year is the final year of that contract. Law requires us to negotiate the year prior so that we have those settlements before we budget next year. This budget does represent two grant-funded mental health positions being absorbed into our budget. They were added through the ARPS or funding, and it does assume that those two will move into the operating budget. We did reduce a part-time transition coordinator and brought those responsibilities into our certified staff, current certified staff. We also see a large number of teachers who are attaining an advanced degree. So with, as a teacher, you need to get your certification, but then you need to continue your advanced learning masters and sometimes a second masters or additional credits. And so in some years, there are more teachers than others who are in that process, and that does equate to a contractual pay increase. And so there's a little bit of pressure based on the large number of teachers. on the large number of teachers, which is a great thing, who are obtaining that advanced degree, but it does have an impact on our salary line. And then the last is just really all the different varied staff members who fall under this idea of certified salaries. Our non-certified salaries are primarily based on negotiated contractual increases, but this actually represents two years' worth of increases for our paraeducators, our custodians, food service, I guess all of them on that list. So the, last year when we presented, we had not renegotiated their contract, right? So this budget kind of represents that. The, the money for the salary increases was placed in a different line item, our unsettled contracts. Now it's in these line items, so when you look, you will see that. These groups traditionally were making minimum wage, and as minimum wage has increased, we've had to continue to meet that, as well as pay a living wage in a very competitive environment to maintain our staff. So some of the pressure on the non-certified really has to do with those two things happening, but it's done through our negotiated contract process. Employee benefits currently, we are budgeting those at a 5%. We've been given a range, we're hopeful that that may come down, and if we were to do that, we have the numbers, I can talk with you at our workshop about what that might look like, if we can budget at 3% and what the savings would be. And so we're, we're ready to do that. I believe they indicated they're hoping they will let us know by the first week in March, which is a little earlier than last year. I think it was the first week in April last year, so that should help in the budgeting process as you're making decisions and what we can share with you with decreases. We are seeing a small increase in Social Security Medicare, but that's offset by a decrease in workers' comp unemployment and our non-certified pension contribution, which continues to be funded strong, and we're able to reduce that account this year. Our transportation increase is another large amount, $187,000, just over. We have a transportation contract that we renegotiated last year. We're going into year two of another five-year contract. It's, the daily rate for buses is a 4% increase, but the major driver to this, so that amounts to $47,000, right? The major driver here is the transportation costs for those additional students who are out-of-district placed. And that's a, a large number. Some of these programs are farther away, and we're finding competition among the transportation sectors has really put pressure on pricing as well. We look to share rides, we look to collaborate and cooperate with other communities who might have students going to the same locations, or we might, but in some cases, the student and the student's specific needs require individual transportation and sometimes some support as well. So that's part of why that line item is higher, and the primary increase is really related to the out-of-district transportation costs. I alluded to this, this out-of-district tuition, right? This is the line item that encompasses students who are needing to receive their education in an appropriate program in an alternative setting, and that is determined by the IEP. And as I mentioned, in the 23-24 year, we projected in January last year that we would have 19 students, we projected out those costs. We actually have 23 students this year. That's part of why we came to you recently, and then next year, we'll have 25 projected. So we're, we're, this represents, this increase of 562, 634 represents that net increase of six students and the representative tuition related to that. These are some other smaller object increases. Again, we work hard in these areas to keep these numbers down, but it does represent a lot more than salary costs or special ed or transportation needs. These are things that are required in our budget. We have a finance software upgrade that's part of the increase in our repairs and maintenance, and just small increases in our other contracts. Our liability property insurance has, this is quoted to us at this point, it is a large increase. We've seen that over the last five years, these, these larger increases in property and liability. Some of it's cybersecurity, some of it is settlements, floods, different things that are really driving the insurance industry, and our renewal costs have tended to be high at this point. That is the, the number we have. The Supplies, Instructional, Textbooks, these are all things that are not large numbers of increase, but they are supporting our new literacy program, as well as a couple of our new curriculum implementation in World History, Spanish, and Algebra II. A lot of things are online now, which over years ago, it could be $100,000 to replace World History text. So it's different now, but we still have the need to access those resources and have the licensing, as well as some workbooks or hard copies. And then in our Supplies, Other Object, our Morgan Athletic Uniforms cycle includes four different teams this year. We have a little bit of an increase in our software licenses and custodial supplies. We do have a few decreases, and there is a major one. In Professional Technical Services, last year, we had an increase over $100,000. That was to provide some specialized contracted services for a couple of our special ed students, very specialized. And going into next year, we don't have that same need for those services, and so that's the, the, we're kind of going back to where we were almost with that reduction. We also are adapting our nursing services to our numbers in our school. We had maintained an additional nurse when we closed Pearson. We kept the full staff. That was very beneficial because COVID hit that year, and we would have been in a really difficult spot, but we're at a point now where our schools have settled, our enrollment, we're reducing nursing services to align with that. And then we have a little bit in the off-year. Every other year, our actuary costs go up, and then they come down again based on the needed documents for our audit process. These are very small amounts, but I, I want to point out the public utilities. We had seen some spikes in our water costs. Again, we had some piping issues that may have been part of it. I think some of the field rotations and needing to water, different seasons where we had drought, where we needed to keep our fields. So we pay for those water costs, DPW maintains our fields. And we're able to, looking at trending, we're bringing that down quite a bit this year. Again, we'll see what the weather brings, but that was an area we could reduce. We are seeing a slight increase in electricity. Last year, we locked in our rates because they had been spiking, so we have a set rate. But this year, at Joel and at Elliott, our Building and Ground Subcommittee vetted, and we implemented LED lighting in those two schools using EverSource incentives. So we should, we need to trend, and we should be bringing down some of our kilowatt hours. But we also did do a, an HVAC project through ARPS or Funding at Joel in the cafeteria, which also provides cooling now to that area, so we have to just trend out our electricity. Our projection is showing a very small increase in electricity that meets some of the EverSource costs that are now part of our monthly bill for the LED lighting, as well as kind of trying to estimate where we might be with our kilowatt hour savings. We hope that will continue to come down over the next couple of years. So that gets us back to our operating budget request and gives you the highlights, a quick overview of the highlights. But I think this next slide helps to put it into some context, and I alluded to it in the presentation. This is the breakdown of where the increase is coming from. Okay? So if you take our total increase of $1,849,563, you can see that salaries and benefits make up the majority of that, right? That is the blood, lifeblood of a school district are its people and how, who we have working with our children. That together makes up just over 3%. Our tuition and transportation costs, well, I think it was about $40,000 of the transportation cost is regular ed transportation. The majority of that 0.53% increase and the tuition increase of 1.59 represents the additional out-of-district students. So 2%, just over 2% of our budget that we're proposing are those costs related to those specialized needs of our students and those programs. Transportation, or not transportation, all the other accounts together, right, result in a negative. And that's a tribute to, I think, the work our administrators did, our central office, our ground maintenance department, in trying to contain everything else so that we can focus the investment on our salaries, benefits, our staff, right, and our students. So if we were to pull out that tuition and transportation, approximately 2%, we would be looking at a 3.24% overall request. So just for some context, I think this helps represent that. After talking about the numbers and the challenges we're facing, a quick reminder that this is what it's all about. Our students going across that stage and capturing that moment of their journey through the Clinton Public Schools. So I want to take a second before I close tonight to show you the materials that we prepared for you, so that you have these. Again, we have a couple weeks before I'm going to come back, but this gives you pretty much the, the questions and the things that we've been asked about, our budget over the years, as well as this particular budget, can be found in this book. So if you would just indulge me for a second, there's a tab for background, has an introductory letter, our mission statement and strategic objectives, and then the timeline of our meetings and everything that we've done, and then will be doing with all of you to get to hopefully a successful town referendum and a final budget. Section two is Enrollment and Staffing. So as I shared, every year, we have NESDEC do an updated enrollment projection. They look at births, they look at what our actual trends have been, and they make that adjustment. And you can see and observe through this, this shows you the current year going forward and what those projections are. And on the next page, I think the graph, or the bar graph kind of shows you that leveling off and actually starting to, to increase a little bit. So we have a little bit more declined, about 40, 50 students if it materializes, and then we're going to start ticking up a little bit. So we really are at this point, and our decisions around staffing and where we're going have that long-term concept that Carl talked about. You know, we can make individual decisions this year, and we might have to, but I think this budget represents positioning us for the next several years despite these kind of costs related to the transportation and tuition, which is really driving this number upward. The next page shows some class size information, and then there's several pages that show the last five years of what we call full-time equivalent staff. So it shows you how many staff members are in those different departments. We start with certified staff, and you can see some trending where reductions may have been made over time. And then in the next section, it gets to our non-certified staff. So if you look at the very top, the orange bar, it'll tell you whether it's certified staff or non-certified and the different categories. Okay? So it tells you what we're projecting, where we are, and where we've been. The next section is really what I just presented. It's the Request by Object, and what I provided there in the first several pages aligns to page 19, where it gives you every object. So the first one is Certified Salaries. If you go back to 15, it describes what's contained in Certified Salaries, and then the high, the part underneath the bullet tells you why it's increasing, decreasing, what the pressure points are for that number. So this is a really good spot, it, when you go back and forget about anything I said to you tonight, to kind of look at the budget from the macro level of objects and understand what the drivers are when you look and say, well, why is Professional Technical Services going down? $170,346. Notice I chose that one. And you go back to the description, it'll tell you why. Okay? So I think those pages are very valuable as you're looking at this and going forward and taking a closer look at our budget. The next section is the Request by Cost Center, which gives you an overview, and when you look at that, you can see Special Services is the biggest driver of this budget on that page. It's page 21. That gives you the overview by each of the schools or departments, we call them cost centers. And then following that, you get every single line item, right, for that cost center, and a little bit of trending from the 22-23 year to the current request that's going forward. It shows you the percent change, the dollar change. And then up above it, there's some nice pictures to draw your attention, but there's also descriptions, again, of what that line item represents, because sometimes it, you read it and you're not sure, and then also why it might be increasing or decreasing. And those notes generally are tied to the ones that are increasing or decreasing the most, the biggest changes, so that you have some context there. And that's that whole section for all of the cost centers. And then the last section is the District Information, and that starts on page 49. So this represents a lot of the things I talked about and backup information that I think you might want to reference, or I will reference as you ask questions. The first page is that projected tuition. So it represents the grade level, the graduation or exit date for that student. Remember, in special education, some students are, we are required by law to provide support and education to them through the end of their school year when they turn 22. So that has changed in the last couple of years. It used to be 21. The state last year mandated it's until 22, and so this represents when we believe they will be exiting. So it's either their graduation year, where they'll finish their extended program, or when they turn 22, the last year that they'll be attending. So it's laid out in the way that the state requires us to report it, is Connecticut districts and non-public districts. So that's why it's laid out that way, and it's two different line items in our specific special ed cost center. You'll see those totals. And then down below is the Additional Magnet, Choice, Charter, Vocational, and VoAG schools that our students are expected to attend, projected for next year. You can see the first several are part of a partnership with New Haven that we entered into a long time ago, so there's no cost for those students. The ones that may require a particular tuition from a district to attend a magnet or a VoAG, you can see based on the number of students, and generally, those tuitions are in the $6,000 to $7,000 range. That is separate from that other tuition increase. So it's in that tuition line, but you, this, this is not increasing, in fact, it might be increasing by 1,000 or maybe going down by 1,000, so there's no real change in that. The next several pages are revenues, that, some of the things that Carl talked about. It gives you some trending of that ECS or Educational Cost Sharing Grant on page 50. You can see the last, since 2017-18, how it has declined, where it's been held steady, and what we've received. The next one, excess costs, where we've received school security grants. So it gives you a good idea of the other grant sources that support our staffing and our schools. And then there's descriptions of what those grants are, how they're used, as well as some new grants, and then how grant and revenue-funded positions are staffed, so that they're, they're all out there. Page 54 gives a little, we have included this for the last probably seven or eight years to show some trending of per pupil expenditures, because we get that question a lot. Following that is our capital expenditure budget, which Carl has made some adjustments to, so I do need to grab that from you, but this was the Board of Ed approved and proposed. And again, Carl has made some adjustments, so what we generally do is update it on our website to show the adjustments as we go forward. But this was what was submitted to Carl and all of you. And then the last page, page 56, is the Board of Ed Debt Service Overtime. Again, another trending, some, similar to some of the graphs that Carl has provided.
Thank you very much.
Okay? So I appreciate your time. I will be back on February 22nd. I will share with you that as you're looking at things, please feel free to reach out to email questions. You can email to me and to Erica Galvin, our Board of Ed Chair. I would rather get you information sooner than that meeting if you need it, or even be able to bring it that night and be prepared for that meeting to give you any additional information that you might need or questions. If you want to create a different process through you, but what I'll do is, anything we receive, we'll, we'll share back, and Mary will share with the whole Town Council. Okay? But if you want to establish a process that it goes through you or through Mary, just let us know. But we're available, and I want to be able to have a, a good discussion that night and provide you with what you need. The board recognizes, and I recognize, we've been here, my board has, the board members are, four of them are in their second term, right? Some of them have served on Board of Finance, Board, we know this process, and we are partners in it. And we mean that, and I know I represent how the board feels about that. We care about this town and community, and we know that it is a collaborative piece. So we're here. I thank you for your time tonight, and I'm happy to answer anything that you might have on the 22nd or in between.
Do you know, Mary Ann, how often, how you're out of, out of district tuition, you're projecting numbers, right? And you don't know for sure. Do you know how often you've been too high, or how often you've been too low? Do you know how often you've been too high, or how often you've been too low? And does the history have anything to do with the future, you know? Because that's, as you know better than us, that is such a cost driver for you. You know, I'm just doing basic math over here, but like, one student is at least 100, probably around 100,000, and that doesn't include transportation, so we spend a lot of time talking about all this other stuff, and two students down, you know, there's $250,000 or whatever, just.
Two students can be almost 1% of an increase for me.
Yeah. So I guess I would be interested, you don't have to answer it now, but sort of like a graph of the history of whether, you know, it's gone up or down, or if you think that's totally worthless exercise.
No, it isn't.
Because it doesn't impact future years, you know?
So we have that trending, I have a whole budget book, but each year, we trend certain lines, so that's one of them, what we've actually budgeted. And so I have a graphical trend of where we were, how it went down, and in the last several years, it's definitely increasing. Pulling the actuals versus projected, we should be able to do that pretty easily, I think. And then I've also broken down the students who are here, it's interesting, you'll see that most of the students who, all of the students that we're projecting next year at this point are either eighth grade through 12-plus, right, through their age 22. So we've developed programs in our district, and we have specific programs. One of the people we're pulling in from the grant, right, that I mentioned in staffing, actually works in a program that helps provide specialized services at Morgan, right? And some preventing, hopefully, some of the need to move students out of district. So we've developed these internal programs, and we're pretty successful with them, but we're seeing that the need is greater and greater, and when it gets to some specific student needs that we can't meet, and through that PPT process, it's determined that, that's when we have to look outward. So I have the trending, I have, we can pull probably how closely we match, but I will tell you, every year, it's different, right? We may have, this year, when I came to you, we had a number of students, two or three, move in, and then a couple that we didn't expect to go out that ended up having to go out.
It doesn't pay.
But I could have a student move away as well, which can drastically change. I can tell you that some of what we projected, and even, you know, the students have had to move programs, and that changes things, sometimes for the better, sometimes for the worse. So I think the actuals and projected would be good, but we have that trending, and we do look at where we are and what are the pressure points that we're seeing.
It doesn't pay for us to pressure you to underestimate either, because then you're going to come to us like you had to do this year.
Right, and I've never, like, I've been here 15 years, we've never done that, and I'm hoping we might be able to contain it within our budget, right? I'll be back to kind of report on it, I'm hoping that's going to be the case, so we'll see. But I will prepare some of that for you for the 20 seconds, so you can at least have that trending information.
Okay, thank you both very much.